They call this meeting the Order of Peace Rise, the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item is approval on the agenda. I have a couple of additions I'd like to put on there. They may be on if we pencil them in, but they weren't originally. Under correspondence, item B, we have the Sinclair County MTA. And then also under correspondence, under C, we have the Sinclair County EDA meeting. And also under correspondence, we have a D, which is a DNR workshop. That's all I have. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no other additions or amendments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the three added items.
Support. Move and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Stating. Motion carries. The next item is approved of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 13th.
Yeah, I have one question on here. It was about the approval of the, with the Seven Rivers.
Six Rivers?
Yeah, Six Rivers. It said the date just said December 2016. Was there a specific date?
Where are you on here, Joe?
Number two A.
Yeah, two A. It says W. Ruhman, advisor board, that he had contact with Six Rivers and closing scheduled for December 2016. Was there supposed to be a specific date?
No, because it was going to be before the first of the year.
Okay. For some reason, I thought you were...
Well, because they changed it once, so I didn't want to pin it down that close.
Okay.
So, and they did close on the 28th.
And the check has been sent.
Okay. All right. But that was my only question. So, if there's no other questions or comments, I can make a motion to approve the amendment. That's as presented.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Stating. Motion carries. Moving on. The next item is the financial report.
We began a month of $202,098.91. We took in receipts of $48,654.39, and we made dispersments in the amount of $182,601.71, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $68,151.59.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted.
Support. Move and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Stating. Motion carries. Moving on, correspondence. Item A, road commission policy. We received, last month, they sent a copy of this, and since then, they've approved it. The road commission has approved two new policies. One of them has to do with the new state law regarding bidding out of road projects. What they're telling you is, if you fall in that category, and if you choose to go to the competitive bidding, that we're going to contribute half of the cost to the engineering that's required to go out for bidding. I don't think it's going to affect us, because even though we're going to do some paving this year, it's a maintenance thing.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That really knocks something off. When they see down maintenance, is like a bridge replacement or something like that, or intersection enlargement?
Well, enlargement, I don't know, but we're not enlarging. We're just paving bad stuff.
Right. No, I'm...
I don't think it'll affect us, and even if it was pertinent, I think you have the option whether to do it or not. So, I don't think that's a big deal.
Right.
The other policy, now this one's going to get kind of iffy, I think. They passed a policy that, if you're a farmer out there, if you tile your field, you want to bring the tile to the road ditch, you got to get a permit. You got to hire the road commission to run that tile through the...
Right away.
Right away by the road, and you have to put a permanent stake saying there's tile there. So, we'll see how that works out.
I'm going to be doing that in the near future.
Well...
I'm a carpenter.
We'll see if they're going to pay the road commission to run that tile.
And how quickly would they get it done? Are they going to hold up the project, or, you know, do they have the manpower to do this?
Oh, they're only talking. Ten feet of tile.
Yeah.
Between the field and the ditch, so I'm sure they'd get there quick enough, but we'll see.
Yeah. Just a clarification on the very first one. When it says maintenance, probably the vast majority of our road work that we have done is maintenance.
It's all maintenance.
Yeah.
But if we, if we had $20,000 and decided we wanted to pave part of Elvin Road, now that would be...
The bridge replacements, was that considered, I mean...
That's maintenance. They're bad. Besides, we're all done with the bridges.
Right.
So, should be good. Besides, it's their policy. We can't work hard at any price, though. Okay. Moving on. Item B, Sinclair County MTA. It's their yearly meeting, and if anyone wishes to go, it's February 9th.
Who's going?
It's $30. And...
Patty has the original on this?
I believe so.
Oh, she does. At least it's closer to that.
Yeah, does anyone want to come along?
Well, I guess what we could do is, since you have the form here in this respect, I thought last year, they sent us our yearly dues, which are like 25 hours for the board and the township, but we just have a motion to approve reimbursing anyone that attends. Then if you can go, you go. If you can't, you can't.
We got to go. I've been the only one going up for the last few years, but I'd make sure when they do the road call, that cask goes heard.
Now, if this requires a response...
Well, it's an RSPD, you know, 27.
She can either pay it, send a check, or you can pay it there, so. But you have to designate on here what you're going to do.
Well, you guys have a preference. You want to pay it and get reimbursed?
Second page indicates whether you want Patty to send a check, or if you will bring your own check when you go. We have to respond by the 27th. So, if she can pay it, if you know you're going?
Yeah.
All right. I'll have Patty take care of it. Anyone else going to go that I can help?
I'll check and see if I have another reading that night.
I'll move before the 27th.
Okay. All right. So Patty will just go ahead and send a check on this.
Okay. We'll let you know.
I guess it'd be appropriate to have a motion to approve the cost of anyone attending this.
I'll make a motion to approve the cost of attending this for anyone who wants to go. $30 each will be covered.
I'll support that.
Move and supported to cover the cost for anyone going to the MTA. That's the Michigan Township Association. If you've ever heard of it. And that's about the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those... Did I say roll call to you, President, on that? No.
No, you didn't.
Well, does that require a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Staining. Motion carries.
Who's the, wait a minute. Who's the speaker here? Is there a speaker here?
I don't know if they've got anybody this year. I just looked at the date and...
Oh, doesn't seem to be a speaker.
Just a minute from last year. They hold their meeting and they...
Yeah, you're soft and you have a good speaker. You're soft and you have a good speaker.
Okay, moving on. Item C, Sinclair County EDA meeting. They're having their semi-annual luncheon. Guest speaker is Mr. Trevor Lauer, who is the president and COO of DTE Energy. It's February 14th at Alexander's, and this is kind of like the other one. If anyone wants to go, the board should reimburse them. It's $35. No, $30. I guess we're a member.
I don't know. That's middle of the EDA. If it was an event, I would.
Dan, you got any interest in going to Alexander's?
I have interest, but I'm not sure what I'm going to do. Cynthia's due for surgery.
I understand.
So, I'm going to leave it all open yet.
Okay. We'll just let it go. If anyone attends, we can approve, repay them next month. Works for me. Okay, moving on. Item B, DNR workshop. We just got this. They're going to be holding a grant workshop at nine, I think it was nine locations, and there is one in Troy. It's free. You don't have to pre-register. I'm going to check with Mr. Brochus, see if he thinks it's beneficial. I'm sure he'll say it is. So, hopefully somebody will go. If you're dying to go, feel free. Joe, that's pretty close to you over there, but it's during the day. One to three.
Twenty-four. I'd have to check.
Okay. Well, let me know if you're going to go.
Is there a cost involved?
Nope. No cost, no food. Just two hours in short. Okay, so let me know if you're going. Okay, moving on. Old business. Item A, park property update and approved payment. The Six Rivers Conservancy closed on property on December 28th, so that met the timeline as far as paying taxes this year. There was a bill involved from the transaction that wasn't covered in the previous check, and that was partially the title insurance company, and most of it was Phase One environmental assessment study. We got $5.90 back, and a little bit of taxes back, but the total bill was $2,307.18, and we are obligated to pay that from the agreement we approved, but I put it on the agenda, so we have a motion to approve that.
The move that we approved, that bill, I'll support that.
Move and supported to approve paying bill to Six Rivers Conservancy concerning the park property. Any amount of, your motions could have the amount, right?
Yes.
Okay. The amount of $2,307.18. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, now, still on that topic, could be a next one, the map. I guess we're hitting under B. We'll move up to B, which is Park and Recreation Plan update. The planner came out last week. He's going to run the preliminary stuff, pass it, pass to the planning commission next week. We've scheduled a public hearing, which we're going to do momentarily here for February the 14th, because it has to have a 30-day public examination period. It's going to be in the paper tomorrow, so it makes it 30 days by February 14th. He drew something up in regards to a map, but it's strictly preliminary. It's nothing fixed. I was too cheap to go dig the big paper out, so I made two of them that overlap, so you can get an idea of the thing of it. So, we'll see what comes of that. But you have to set, in your packet was a copy of what's going to be in the newspaper. So, we do need to set a public hearing for the February 14th meeting for the Park and Recreation Plan.
I make a motion that we set a public hearing, the Casco Township Board Trustees meeting for February 14, 2017, for the Casco Township Recreation Plan.
Support. Move and supported to set a public hearing for February 14th meeting for the Park and Recreation Plan. Is there any discussion?
This is kind of neat looking. I guess it's exciting.
Well, you know, I'm certainly not an expert, but my question was, depending on the utilization, if you expect people to fish, or barbecue, or something, you're going to have to have a way they can drive closer to the river than that, because nobody's going to walk a half a mile to get down there to fish. But that's, it's just preliminary.
Just preliminary.
So, we'll see what happens with that.
It's wide open at this point.
Okay. Moving on, new business. Item A.
You got to vote.
Oh, we didn't vote. I'm sorry. Is there any other discussion on the public hearing motion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Staining. Motion carries. Good thing you told me, I haven't got it.
It's all right.
Moving on. New business. Item A, resolution 2017-01, annual meeting. Every year in January, we set an annual meeting and a public hearing in regards to the budget for the meeting in March, and it's March 14th this year. Resolution 2017-01 is for that purpose, for the annual meeting and a public hearing for the 2017-18 budget. So, we would need a motion to adopt resolution 2017-01.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2017-01.
I'll support that.
Move and supported to adopt resolution 2017-01. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Item B, resolution 2017-02, ordinance revisions. In your packet, we're a list of the ordinance revisions that the planning commission have been working on. If you compare them to our current ordinance book, you can see the changes. If you have any questions, now is a good time to ask, because each section in here, there's going to be a change, might be a small change or a large change. So, anybody have any questions? If not, then we need a motion to adopt resolution 2017-02.
I make a motion to adopt resolution, Casco Township Resolution 2017-2, resolution to adopt Casco Township ordinance number 30-93.
Support.
Move and supported. And we're making changes, and most places are very small changes. The biggest change is we've, in here, is a new wind power ordinance. That's the biggest change. The other stuff are smaller. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item C, emergency road funding. Every January, we allocate $20,000 to an account in our budget for emergency road funding in case bad things happen in the winter and the spring. So, that's where we're looking at this.
I move that we allocate $20,000 in a special account for emergency road funding.
Support. Move and support to allocate $20,000 for emergency road funding. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's carried. Moving on. The next item goes along with that. Now that we've allocated $20,000, we have to make sure we have $20,000 in an account to cover that. And you can see from the packet there, we're taking, that's not this one, we're going to take, what, $10,000 out of the Levo line item, and add it to our road commission fund, which currently has 13,003 in it. So, that account, which will be our emergency roads, will then have $23,303.
You have to approve this budget amendment?
Yep, we need a motion.
I will make a motion to approve budget amendment. Let me see, how does she do this?
She usually reads the number.
All right, we will, and we'll do that. We're account 101-101-826, and we're moving $10,000 into that account.
Out of that account.
Out of, I'm sorry. Oh, out of that account, and into the road commission fund of 101-101-830, which will leave an ending balance in that account of $23,303.16 for our emergency.
I'll support your motion.
Move and supported. Not saying it again. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Item E. Our current planning commission chairman, Eric Reed, is retired. He's going to be moving up north, and he has asked not to be reappointed as his term has run out. I recruited a resident, Mr. Gerald Keller, who is here tonight. You can grill the hell out of him. That's good with me. So, I am proposing to the board that they appoint Gerald Keller to a three-year term on the planning commission.
Okay, I just have a few questions, right?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Keller, welcome. Okay, first of all, when you go by Gerald, Jerry?
Jerry.
Okay, Jerry. So, you're a lifelong resident here?
Yep.
Okay, what did you do for life?
PD plant.
Okay, good.
Little play farmer.
Okay, good deal. All right, good deal. So, yeah. You learn as you go. I mean, I've been a member of the planning commission now for 20 years, so. And it's, we get thorough on our discussions. We have a good planner. We have a guy called Steve Case, and he comes here. He's been, he's been with us now, what, five years now, Steve? Is...
Yeah, six months anyway.
Yeah, really good. Lots of experience, so you learn as you go.
I guess make a look a little harder, bro.
Oh.
You got to read the book.
Yeah.
I gave him orders.
It's, we all start out as novices. You learn. You continue to learn. I mean, I learn about stuff all the time, so.
There's many workshops, very, I believe, in town.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, if you got a question, you ask it. That's how you learn. Don't just sit there and don't say anything. Or if they say something, you think it's goofy or wrong, tell them what you think. Persuade you that, no, it's not goofy or wrong, or you persuade them that, yeah, it's goofy or wrong.
And in Casco Township, we get fair, we put fairness to a premium. No applicant who comes to Horgus can't say they were treated unfairly. I mean, we give fairness, if they like it or not. So, welcome, and a week from tide.
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Mr. Gerald Keller.
Appointed.
Appointed him. Appointing him to a three-year, appointed to the Sinclair County, Sinclair, Casco Township Planning Commission.
Support.
Move and supported to appoint Gerald Keller to a three-year term on the Casco Township Planning Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Staining. Motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
Hopefully it can make a difference.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on. As we mentioned, we have a couple of new members on the planning commission and an alternate on the ZVA. It's possible that in the next couple of months, one of the months, there really won't be any business scheduled, and he would do a training session at no extra charge to us. And I would like, if that happens, I would like to invite the ZVA, in which case they would get paid, so I would need more approval for that, because it's spending money.
Okay, I'd like to make an approve, a planning commission, ZVA workshop at some date in the future, in which the zoning board of appeal members will get paid for that workshop.
Okay.
Will the planning commission, everybody get paid?
Well, they'll be at a planning commission meeting, so they're already getting paid.
Oh, really?
So, okay, move and supported.
Who made the, who supported?
To approve payment to ZVA members if a workshop is held with the planning commission. Is there any discussion? I guess, did I tell you roll call anyway? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item G. I thought I'd have it by now, but I didn't. We're going to be getting a communication from the road commission for our annual meeting. I've seen that it's either going to be the 28th of February, the 1st of March, somewhere in that neighborhood. And when they send it to us, they always ask us for a preferred time slot. Do I have a preferred time slot? You better call them right away in the first couple of weeks.
Where are you on?
Well, the last couple of years, we did like the 3:30 one. If that's an option, I was going to do it again, unless you guys want something different.
3:30 sounds fine.
I won't be able to go. Well, the 28th of February is the last day to pay taxes, and I have to be in my office until 5 o'clock. So, give them my regards.
Bet it wasn't the same day as the DNR workshop that they continued to get to.
Sadly. That'd be called the 3:30 or 3 o'clock time.
Okay, if it's an option, I don't know if they're, but that's what they've done for a number of years.
28th or the 1st.
Yeah, and I'm not, that's not positive. I just saw it in minutes to one of their meetings, so we'll be getting that any day.
All right.
Okay, the consensus appears to be 3:30 is fine. Okay, moving on. Payment of the bills.
If there are no questions, I will make a motion if the bills be paid.
Just one quick question. BC DOA.
The where?
We're on BC DOA.
First page.
Oh, blue cross, blue sheet.
Oh.
No, that's wrong.
No, that's a B.
Bill, there's...
Oh, that's a bill.
No, that's the only question I had.
We don't have to show us.
You is not coming from that.
Yes, that's coming from here.
Okay.
Joseph, who supported that?
No, Colleen.
I made a motion.
I'll support it. Move and supported, pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Colleen?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizens' comments. Anything you want to ask or address the board? Now's your chance. We just request that you abstain. You speak your name for the minutes.
Okay.
You want your name in the minutes, then give your name.
No, we're just here to look at you.
Well, that's okay. So, you saw Mr. Keller appoint it.
There's a small charge.
You guys, well, if you have an interest, we can have openings down the road. We're always looking for, you know, various folks.
Absolutely.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe in the target.
Yeah, we're probably, there'll be probably something we'll explore about having, you know, start with the park. Maybe having some sort of...
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that up for, in the newsletter, I'm going to put a paragraph in there that township board is going to be looking into forming a park directly. And if anybody's interested, let me know, or let the township know. So, I just wanted to kind of discuss that. I missed it.
My name on that.
So, it's not a surprise. You want your name on that?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a workshop coming up.
We have a workshop, boy.
The people who were on before, didn't we used to have a parks and recreation stuff?
We did about 20 years ago. So...
Time flies.
It's like this yesterday.
And I hope, like Louie pointed this, that we get a wide spot, that we get some...
We'll see if anybody has any interest.
I hope so.
Basically, we're going to, in the future, with not very long period, hopefully, we're going to start putting a park together. We get money every year from the county village, and the only thing we can spend it on is parks. So, we've accumulated quite a bit. And we've made an agreement to buy some property on Furtmore Highway that goes back to the river. So, it's our intent to put a park there, so you'd have kayak access, and probably a walking trail, maybe fishing, whatever. So, that's the plan. So, it's time, by April 1st, we're going to apply for a grant to purchase the property from the conservancy. And then, once that's in, then we're going to start working on what's available in the area of grants for the next year to develop the park, if we can save some money here. So, that's kind of the plan. Are you interested in parks?
No. I'd like to get involved.
It's a good, it's a good place.
You're the brave soul.
Yeah, no, we'll do.
I only wanted to, you want to touch base on that?
Oh, yeah, if you'd like to go down and see...
Oh, oh, yeah, if you'd like to go down and see decorated a bit in our new addition. We've hung some prints in the hallway in explanation of them because they are called The Four Freedoms by Norman Rockwell. And I think you'll really like, particularly my favorite one is the one that says freedom of speech. And it looks like, just like this meeting. It does. So go and take a gander. And I thank the township for chipping in greatly on the cost. And a good framer from Marine City put them together for us. And I think you did a very nice job.
We'd like to show off the new offices.
So as soon as we adjourn, if you want to go down and walk around the new place, they'll give you a 10 cent tour. You can see the new pictures. They wouldn't let me put maps up there, so we had to put pictures up there. Okay, anybody else have anything?
If not, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, stand adjourned.